Testing one, two, check, check. Hey, hey. One, two. One, two. Check, check. One, two, one, two. Testing, one, two.
June Wolfsie to the dais. Good evening. Oh, that is really loud. All right. Good evening. Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Kansas City Public School Board of Directors meeting for January 11th. We'll call this meeting to order. June, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Buckner?
Here.
Ms. Cortez?
Here.
Ms. Ford?
Here.
Dr. Jones?
Present.
Ms. Wolfsie?
Here.
Mr. Hogan?
Here. All right. For the agenda tonight, we'd like to get a motion for an amended agenda. We're just going to make a quick sort of technical tweak, I'll call it, for item B2 under Board of Directors' report. So we're going to eliminate the title of Board Member Voice. That is not happening tonight. And the two items below it will roll up into E and F under Board Chair Report. So it's our motion for an amended agenda with that item being stated.
I'll move.
Second.
June, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsie?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes, the motion passes. All right, June, will you go through a review of our old action items?
So for the action items, we have one item that is outstanding. It is the item that is related to the data we received from DSC. That data is not yet received, and as soon as we receive it, it's, I believe it's still embargoed, it will be sent to the board upon receipt of that information.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Collier, is that sort of related to the information from Ms. Cortez's email earlier this week that we'll be able to get that out in the Friday update?
Yes, we will be sending that information in the Friday update.
Great, thank you. All right. Well, with that being said, we'll roll right into the Board of Directors' report. And for the Board Chair Report, a couple of items. One, want to start actually by talking about our good friend, our Board Secretary, June Kolkmeier, has announced and did actually last year, announced her retirement from the district. So as she dances and sings her way on the way out the door. Her last day will be April 30th. And so we're really, really lucky though that we've hired Lisa Limberg, who's sitting right next to June. Want to sort of give a round of applause and a welcome to Lisa for joining us. She comes to us from the Grain Valley, from the Grain Valley School District, where she spent 26 years being both the Board Secretary and Administrative Secretary for the Superintendent. And so 26 years, extremely experienced in this space, was sat in on over 600 board meetings, which just kind of blows your mind. And so it's great that she has an opportunity to sort of orient and get familiar with the district by working directly with June over the next couple of months and get experience working with our team, Dr. Collier and her team. And so we're excited to have you on board, Lisa. Welcome. And we'll look forward to working with you over the months and years to come. Now, one, so I guess bittersweet announcement to make that a lot of you are probably already aware of, but Mr. Abarka, our Treasurer, resigned from the board a couple of weeks ago. And that's because he got elected to the Johnson County Legislature. So Jackson County, not Johnson County, very different places, totally different states. Demographics are quite different as well. So he resigned from our board, but he is going to be on the Jackson County Legislature. And I'd say actually the date is 2019 to 2022 on our board, because it was prior to the first of the year that he resigned, I believe. And so we are going to need to fill that seat on the board, obviously. And so what we'll do is we're going to make a resolution tonight to ensure that his open seat appears on the ballot on the June 20th municipal general election. And so in order to do that, we need to vote on a resolution to make that happen. So I will read the resolution now, and then the board can vote. So resolved that an election be held in the School District of Kansas City, Missouri herein after the school district pursuant to Section 162.492 RSMO on June 20th, 2023, between the hours of 6:00 and 7:00 PM for the purpose, 6:00 AM and 7:00 PM for the purpose of electing one Director of the Board of the School District for Subdistrict 3 with a term expiring 2025. So this will be finishing out Mr. Abarka's term for that seat. Further resolved, that all qualified voters residing within the school district, within the corporate limits of Kansas City, Missouri, shall each vote at the polling places designated for the precinct in which he or she resides, as such polling places shall be designated by the Kansas City Board of Election Commissioners. Further resolved, that pursuant to Section 115.125 and 115.127 RSMO, the Secretary of the Board of Directors hereafter the Board of the School District shall provide notice in writing to the Election Board as required by Section 115.125. The notice of election is approved by the Board in the form attached here too and made part of the resolution by reference, the Board of Directors of the Kansas City District, or the School District of Kansas City, Missouri. So with that being said, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Second.
June, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford? Dr. Jones? Ms. Wolfsie? Mr. Hogan?
Yes, the motion passes. All right. Well, let's go. Can we go forward on the slide deck? I think it may be just one slide. There we go. Okay, we're going to talk about this open seat, because I want the public to know about if there's interest, how to go about and what the dates are to appear on the ballot and to run for this open seat in Subdistrict 3. So you can see the timeline here. I mentioned the June 20th, 2023 election date. May 24th is the last day for voters to register. And then on February 21st of 2023 is the first day for candidate filings, essentially meaning you get to declare your candidacy. I want to make a note, though, because there's been some confusion about this in the past, you actually could go ahead and start collecting your 250 required certifiable signatures as soon as possible. So sometimes those take a long time knocking on doors, et cetera. But I want to make sure people have ample time. And so you don't have to wait for that February 21st date in order to start collecting those signatures. It's just the day in which you would, the first day in which you would declare your candidacy. And then on the last day, that March 14th, 2023 date, it's the last day in which you can collect signatures and have those turned in. And all of that happens, and if you need information, can happen through our Board Secretary, June Kolkmeier, here. And, what's that? Oh, and there will be a notice hung on the front door as well, just alerting you of that information. And then the final certification date would be April 11th. And so that timeframe between the 14th of March and April 11th allows time for the Kansas City Election Board to certify those signatures. So they have to be registered voters inside the boundaries of the school district. So we want people to be interested in serving on the board. It's a really, really fulfilling role. It's hard work. No decision is an easy decision, because it all sort of rolls down to our students. But we would like to get a robust group of candidates to compete for this opportunity to serve on this really, really important board. So with that being said, the last thing we'll do before we'll bring Mr. Abarka up is we will do a nomination for the Treasurer. And I don't think I heard back from some of my colleagues on this question, so I'm just going to do it. But the election this evening will be for the Office of Treasurer of the Board. So the Board elects its own officers, the President, Vice President, and the Treasurer. Nominations are now open for Treasurer.
Board Chair Hogan, I'd like to nominate my colleague Rita Cortez for Treasurer.
Okay. Rita Cortez has been nominated. Are there other nominations? No? All right. Hearing no further nominations, nominations are closed. We'll do a roll call election. We'll now proceed to the election. The candidates for Treasurer are Rita Cortez, or the candidate. This election will be conducted by roll call. We will first vote on the, well, there's only one person nominated, so we'll go ahead and vote on her. The Secretary will call the roll.
This will be a yes or no vote. Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsie?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes. All right. Congratulations, Rita. You're now Treasurer of Kansas City Public School Board. So the results were as follow. There were six votes in favor of, zero opposed. So Rita has received the majority of the votes cast and has declared elected Treasurer. Rita has been serving as the Finance Committee Chair for the last almost two years. It'll be two years here in April, and has done a great job of that. She's got a ton of experience in this space, and has really sort of focused on making sure that we make our finances along with our treasurer more accessible to the public and transparent to them. So Rita will serve as a Treasurer with distinction, I'm certain of it. And so thank you for stepping up and taking part in the leadership team. All right. Now, Mr. Abarka, will you please join us or come to the podium? Time to roast, Mr. Abarka. Joking, that didn't go over well, apparently. Yeah. So I'll just start, and people, you know, the Board can join in if they so choose. But I'll just say, let me start by saying thank you, man. You know, you get a lot of flack from people. You and I've had some real conversations about things. But here's the reality, and I don't think people get this about Manny, is that he cares deeply, not just about, you know, Hispanic students, but about all of our students, right? He's been a champion from this dais for Hispanic students, because we need one, frankly. But he's been a champion for all students, right? And, yeah, that's good. And he knows how difficult this work is. And the thing that I have always appreciated about you, Manny, is your authenticity, right? You're doing this work for the right reasons. And look, there's nothing wrong with being ambitious, right? People throw that term out there like it's a bad thing. Like, it's okay to be ambitious, but your ambition comes, and your success in your ambition comes on top of all the hard work that you're doing to make sure that our kids have what they need. And I couldn't be more grateful for serving alongside you, for being challenged by you. I'm a better board member, a better person, as a result of those challenges that you threw at me. And I want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. And I also want to tell you, look, man, you've been an incredible friend. We have a real friendship now. I know that I can count on you, eh-ish. Yeah. And so I just want to thank you for your service. Thank you for your continued service going over to Jackson County. I know you'll do great work there. You're the Treasurer or the Chairman of their Budget Committee. And so you'll be able to extend all the great information and knowledge that you had here in KCPS over to the county and expand your influence beyond just the boundaries of KCPS. So thank you for everything you're doing. Much success in the future. And then I'll stop there. Ms. Wolfsie?
Manny, we will miss you on government relations. Just like I echo everything that Nate says, but you keep us on our toes. And what I most appreciate is that when you see something that we need to be doing, you do not let up. And in a good way, because I think of finance and the budgeting tool idea that you had, and I, it's, it was, you just had to keep pursuing, and I'm glad that you did. And I would say the same thing on government relations and us working on the federal, you know, aspect of that work. So thank you. I know I've seen you put the time in, which it's a lot of hours, and you know we don't get paid for it. So, but I know our students and our families benefited from your service, and I appreciate it working with you.
Ms. Cortez?
I echo certainly my colleagues' comments, but here's what I know for sure, that you will continue to keep our families and our kids top of mind. And that's what gives me great hope as you move on to the Jackson County Legislature. Thank you for the heart that you bring to your work, and may you always be our friend. Thank you.
Dr. Jones?
I just want to say thank you, Manny. In addition to everything everyone else has said, thank you for being the voice around inclusion on our board, whether you're talking about language barriers and addressing those. You've been just a very ardent voice around that, as well as MBE, WBE. So just always be in that voice to ask those questions. So I just thank you, and I wish you well. I know you'll do well in your new role.
All right. Dr. Collier?
I would just simply add, just on behalf of the administration and the staff here at KCPS, we thank you for your service. Thank you for always being willing to raise your voice and to speak your truth, and just overall being a really powerful and relentless advocate for the students here of KCPS. You challenge administration in many ways, but we appreciate that, because we know ultimately what you're wanting is the best overall experience and outcomes for the students here in Kansas City Public Schools. And I just echo that we know that you're going to continue to speak and to support KCPS and our students in many ways in the future. So thank you.
So, Mr. Abarka, we were supposed to actually present you with a clock. I'm not sure how clocks became a thing for outgoing board members, but it's a thing. And so we'll invite you back on April 11th to participate in that celebration. But with that being said, thank you for your service, man. We appreciate you. All right, now that's out of the way. Kidding. We'll move over to Ms. Wolfsie to talk about, or to give us a brief update on government relations.
Thank you, Chair Hogan. Okay. So coming up, we will be participating with our brethren across the state at St. Louis Public Schools on Tuesday, January 31st. We'll be having our kind of second, if you will, Parent Advocacy Day in Jefferson City. And we plan on those that want to participate, and I'll give you how you can participate at the bottom of my little spiel, but we're going to, our goal is to help demystify what happens in Jefferson City and help our, teach our parents how to use their voice effectively down at the Capitol, and just kind of essentially hope that many folks that choose to participate get bitten by the bug of being able to share your story about how you came to Kansas City Public Schools and what it means to you, what your school means to you, to your student. And so some of the things that we're going to be able to do, it is a long day, but it's a fun day, we'll be able to see a quick committee hearing, hopefully with an education committee and maybe some topics that might be of interest. We'll be introduced on the House and the Senate floor and maybe get to see some debate. We will also, this is the bulk of what we'll be doing, a meeting with legislators in small groups. And then we will culminate the whole event with a rally with the St. Louis Public School folks and just kind of being able to share our stories with the public. And so to sign up, and we hope that you do, we want to have a nice breadth of folks from elementary, middle, high school, all north, south, east and west, parents from all those areas, all those schools. To sign up, you just need to send an email to misskathleenpointer@kpointer, P-O-I-N-T-E-R, at kcpublixschools.org. And just let her know that you're expressing an interest. And it is January 31st roughly, and I'm thinking it's going to be 6:00 AM in the morning, we might leave on the bus, and we'll return hopefully by about 4:30, but don't let that deter you. It is super fun. And trying to think of what else you might need to know. If you are a community member and you would also like to join us, please feel free. Same process, just send an email to Kathleen, and we'll get you on the list. We plan to have at least one training, probably virtual, so that you'll feel comfortable sharing your story in the most effective way possible with legislators. And right now, we don't have that set in stone, but maybe January 27th. So I think that's it.
Questions from the Board? Oh, yep.
I do want to ask my fellow Board members if they could just let me know if they would like to attend, so I can just plan on how to utilize everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wolfsie. Appreciate it. All right. Dr. Collier, we will turn it over to you for the Superintendent Report.
All right. Good evening. This evening, we have several presentations that we'll be working through. The very first will be the Blueprint 2030 Recommendations. And then we'll have, we have two workshop presentations, 4.10, which will center on repurposing, thank you, and then 4.11, which is tax incentives. Before we jump into our presentations, I would like to take a moment to introduce a new member of our executive leadership team. I'd like to introduce Mr. Scott Jones. He is our new Chief Technology Officer. He just started maybe a week ago. And he's already proven to be a valuable asset to our team, really making a difference. So we just want to welcome you, Mr. Jones. Thank you for being here. And I want to make sure the public and everyone knows who he is. So starting with our Blueprint 2030 Recommendations, once again, good evening. Thank you all for being here. I appreciate your presence. This evening, the administration will be bringing forth a final Blueprint 2030 Recommendation to the Board. We know that this has been a long and somewhat emotional process for many involved. While there have been many different perspectives and opinions shared over the course of the last three months, this process has also shown us that there are still many people within our community who share a genuine concern for our district, for our schools, and most importantly, the overall success and well-being of our students. And for that, I'm grateful. This indicates to me that KCPS has a necessary support, and we are also well positioned to excel and to become the world-class school system that we all know that we can be. So with that said, there are several components of the presentation this evening. We'll have a summary of the Blueprint 2030 history and process. Sometimes it's important to take a step back to see where you've been, so you can better understand where you currently are and then where you're going. We also want to present revised academic vision recommendations, so everyone understands and knows how some of these decisions are impacting then the implementation of the academic vision. Also revised real estate recommendations. We'll have some time to talk through some of that transition planning and teams. We know that was a very important component of the plan, and we have a lot more detail to share this evening. And then finally, we'll close out with next steps and a call to action. So starting with, you see there, System Analysis Overview. The Systems Analysis was an in-depth review of the current KCPS system. And when we say system, we're talking about KCPS schools as well as charter schools. And in about 2017, upon Dr. Bedell's arrival, the Administration Board felt like it was important for us to examine how choice has impacted this school system. We have been a system of choice for many years, dating back to when we were, when we had magnets, and all of our schools were themed, and students and families could select from whichever school they wanted to attend. And then later on, we know that charter schools were also introduced to our community. But through all of that time, up until 2017, there really had been no formal study conducted to really give us an indication around where KCPS sits within the larger educational landscape and just how choice has impacted. and just how choice has impacted our system. And so, the systems analysis really served in many ways as a predecessor to Blueprint 2030. Some of the findings from that study informed and helped prompt our positioning and our movement around Blueprint 2030. So once again, when I'm talking about systems analysis over the next few slides, I want to make sure that everybody understands we're talking about KCPS, as well as charters. This is the larger educational landscape here within Kansas City. So, the purpose for the system, I'm sorry, systems analysis, once again, was to give KCPS a view of where we sit within this larger system, but we also wanted to think about what was best for students in both KCPS and charter schools, and find ways to collaborate and work together, so ultimately, that we can improve the outcomes for students. And then also looking at quality pre-K through 12th grade educational experiences, and readying our students for college and careers. And once again, we were really looking for empirical data around this, because up until this point, it was all anecdotal, but the systems analysis gave us some of the data and information that we needed then to be able to move forward with more firm decisions around our next action steps as a school system. So, this piece is very important when you look at the enrollment. We've had a lot of conversation over the last few months about enrollment in our schools, but to me, this here really paints the picture. It shows you that over time, that very top line there, which represents Kansas City Public Schools and charters, you can see overall, there has been a decline of students within the larger system. So, we went from 35,710 in 1999, to 2022, down to 26,607 students. So, there's been an overall decline. But also since 2000, with the onset of charters, KCPS has continued to decline in enrollment, reaching about 13,340. And then over the next 20-some years, charters enrollment has increased, so you can see that in the red line. Another important time or event to consider in this was the independence annexation, where about three or four schools became a part of the independent school district, and in that process, about 300, 3,000, I'm sorry, 3,000 students transitioned from Kansas City Public Schools to independents. So, here is our story around enrollment, and we know enrollment is a really key piece around our school's ability to thrive, and our ability to serve our students well, depending on the size of schools. Here you can see, and I want to just note, this was, this was some data from school year 19. This has not been formally updated, although we have an idea of where we are now. But in, in school year 2019, we decided it was important also to look at comparing ourselves to a district of comparable size. So you can see about 26,742 students within KCPS and charters, and then you see Springfield Public Schools with about 24,931 students. And while we recognize that these systems are very much, they're different demographically, we're aware of that, they are very similar in terms of assessed valuation. And so, we felt like it's appropriate to look at that, and when you, and when you look at this data here, and you look at the high schools in particular, KCPS and charter system serves, or provides about 15 options versus five options, so about three times as much as Springfield School District. And then looking at the middle school options, at least double. We have double what Springfield has around middle schools. Our elementary is a little more in line, but overall, we know that we have far more seats than what we actually need in our school system. We are saturated with seats. And so, this has become a dilemma, not just for KCPS, this is also a dilemma for charters, because we're at a place now where we don't necessarily have the number of students to fill all of those seats. So right now, everyone's grappling for students, and then, for us in particular here in KCPS, we're looking at our levels of efficiency, and our ability to serve our students well. And so, once again, some of this data, once again, has, has helped us or led us to where we are now, as we're trying to make some of these critical decisions around how we move forward as a school system, becoming more efficient, and redirecting more of our resources into classrooms. Another key piece here is that, in our system, we have four charter sponsors. At the time of this data, those sponsors were Kansas City Public Schools, we are, I think it was also UCM at the time, University of Missouri, and then the Charter Commission. The only one that has changed as of today is UCM is no longer a sponsor, it is now the University of St. Louis. But the other piece here, I think is important to note, when you look at those 21 charter school operators, that's in a sense, almost 21 mini Kansas City Public School districts. Each of them has their own board, they have their own central office, their own transportation in many cases, food service, custodial services. All of these services are duplicated across our system, and in just a moment, you'll see a slide showing our expenditures as a school system versus Springfield, and that will really tell the story of, around where our resources are going in comparison to a district of comparable size. Here, looking particularly at our high schools, this is current data. You can see the number, once again, the number of buildings that we have here is 17, whereas in Springfield is five. And if you remember on that last slide, I think before we updated, I think it showed 15 high school options. As of today, we are at 17 options. So you can see that's increasing, yet, once again, we're looking at total enrollment and being saturated with seats. We continue to have far more seats available in the district, which once again stretches resources very thinly. But when you look at the average building size, this is the number of students in a building, in Springfield, you could find 14,072 students on average, and look at Kansas City Public System, once again, that's KCPS and charters, 360 students in a building. And so, once again, that really starts to speak to our ability to serve students, providing the kind of programming and staffing and the educational opportunities that we want our students to have. Once again, this is a part of the data that helped lead us to where we are today. And I, once again, I thought it was important to share this, because I, I know that many people don't really understand how we got to this place, but this is really critical data, once again, that, that spoke to us and indicated to us that we needed to do something differently. Here is the, the slide that I mentioned earlier, that shows you how KCPS is spending our resources, KCPS system, not just Kansas City Public Schools, how we're spending our resources versus Springfield. We are, we're not too far off when it comes to spending for K-12 instruction. We are spending more, but I believe that in our system, for this, our student demographic, we probably need more. But when you look at the transportation expense, for example, that's almost double what we're spending versus what Springfield is spending. So a lot of our resources are going toward transportation that could be going into the classroom. Same thing when you look at the operation of plan expenses, double. We're spending more. Those are resources that should be going into classrooms that are not. And once again, this is another school district right in the state of Missouri, that is about the same size that we are as a system. So what is Blueprint 2030? I know you all have seen this slide many times before, but just a quick reminder, it is our update to our five-year strategic plan. It helps to map our path forward as a school district in terms of where we want to be, and particularly around the kind of academic experiences that we want our children to have. But there are two main objectives of Blueprint 2030. The first is academic achievement, we want to increase that, and then we also want to overall enhance that student experience. The components of the academic vision, I don't have time this, this evening to go through all of them, but they are listed, but I do want to note that in October, when we presented the academic vision, we failed to bring in the literacy and math focus, and I believe we made that error, because we did not wait for Blueprint 2030 to start addressing this. We know, when we look at our data, we know that we can't afford to wait. We have to ensure that our students are moving academically. And so, we started our literacy and our math focus this school year. We made sure that we, we were staffing for a reading interventionist and a math interventionist in every building. We initiated our KCPS Loves to Read campaign, and really, that was about elevating the importance of reading across our school system, and making sure that adults are also modeling that for students, those habits of reading, and then having culturally responsive libraries in, in all of our elementary schools, so that students have an opportunity to see themselves reflected in literature, that mirror, also an opportunity to learn more about others, that looking through that window, and then also having, being able to pique their curiosity and creativity, and step into new worlds through literature, and that's that sliding glass door. And so, we also wanted to make sure that our teachers were equipped with endorsements around reading and math, so that they're better also prepared. We also sent, I think about 124 of our staff members this year to numbers training, which is for math, and then letters training, which is for, for reading, and we're hearing really positive feedback around the effectiveness of those PD sessions. And so, there, there are several things that we've done this year already, looking also at district-wide instructional strategy-focused areas for both literacy and math. So, once again, these are things that we implemented this year, not waiting until any decision was made around Blueprint 2030, because this is urgent, those two areas in particular. Also, a part of that vision we've talked about is instrumental music in the elementary and secondary schools, and our desire was to begin that as early as kindergarten, and then also that beyond the four walls learning experiences. We know learning doesn't happen just in the classroom. A lot of important learning happens outside of the four walls, but sometimes our students don't always have those opportunities, those same opportunities that students in other areas may have, and we wanted to remove that barrier, ensure that all of our students have at least guaranteed two field trips that are tied to the curriculum and the learning that happens every year. Some of those will be out of city, out of state, but we felt like it's important to ensure that those two were at least happening. That doesn't mean that we were limiting students or teachers from planning other field trips, but we definitely wanted to guarantee two every year, from kindergarten through the 12th grade, and then also building on our college and career pathways, ensuring that there are at least three pathways in every high school, where students have an opportunity for job shadowing, for internships, learning more about careers that they're interested in, and sort of getting their feet wet before they ever step into a college or career. They already have some experiences that have prepared them for those opportunities. So, you've seen this slide before as well. This is the Blueprint 2030 journey. This began slightly after we concluded our systems analysis, and so, phase one began around that time, and then moved all the way through spring of '21, and that's just further assessing our school system and our needs. Phase two was our goal setting, and we'll hear a little bit more about those goals in just a few moments. Phase three was our scenario planning that happened last spring. At that time, there were scenarios provided around the number of schools that could potentially close. School names were not provided, but there was, the scenario did list numbers of schools where our community was able to come and give us feedback on those. And then we, where we are now is phase four, recommendations, and so, we're continuing through that phase until a final decision has been made by the board, and then we will move into implementation. This fall, we did begin to pilot some of the academic vision planning, but ultimately, we're going to be full throttle into that plan fall of '23, and then annually, we will come back to evaluate how effective the programming is, are we seeing the outcomes, and then making shifts or pivoting if we need to. So, phase four, where we are around the engagement and common themes. Many of you all were a part of these sessions. Total meetings was 57. 12 of them, those meetings were public for anyone in the community that wanted to attend. We held 38 staff meetings, and then seven meetings for all of our secondary schools. Total participants, 1,774. There were some common themes that emerged through this engagement. Some of those themes consisted of questioning whether, regarding how schools were selected for closure and consolidation in the recommendation. There was also questions about contingency planning if a bond does not pass. There was excitement about rural language expansion, the arts and course offerings, people were very excited about that. But then there were also concerns about the timing and the speed of the closures, and then requests for further collaboration and engagement. So, I want to make sure that, I want to make sure I'm not forgetting anything that I wanted to say tonight, and I think I'm at a slide where I need to say some things. Okay, so before I dive into our recommendation, as I've shared previously, these recommendations are not made lightly, and they require a great deal of deliberation and thought. It is not easy to ever discuss closure of schools, because so many people have deep connections to those places, to the people and the memories. I believe that the recommendations for closures were made with thoughtfulness, they were based on data, and most importantly, consideration for the educational experience and outcomes for the students that we serve today. Based on our current enrollment and what we are able to provide to our students academically, closures are necessary. It doesn't feel good to say that, and I wish it were not true, but it is true, given our current reality. But with that said, we also recognize that it is possible to do the right thing at the wrong time and in the wrong way. So we are doing what we promised we would do at the very beginning of this engagement process, and that was to listen and to genuinely consider how we might incorporate some of what we heard into a workable recommendation and a plan for how best to proceed at this time. In just a few moments, I'll be coming back, after I review this slide, I'll be coming back with next steps and a call to action. So, really quickly here, what KCPS administration is currently recommending, a new mission statement that more accurately reflects our district work. We want to update that strategic plan with goals, and once again, those will be shared in a few moments for 2025, but also 2030. An academic vision to include all components that KCPS wants to achieve with the understanding that future decisions are required for full implementation. As of today, where we stand, we are recommending closure of two schools, and that will be for the fall of 2023. No other schools will be designated for closure at this time, and then there will be a call to action for this community to ensure a thriving, sustainable school system. And then finally, and we'll talk a little bit about that, is to pursue a general obligation bond in the spring of 2024. And I know everybody can read, but I wanted to take the time to go through each, each of those components, because I think it's important. So once again, we'll be coming back, after, toward the end of the presentation, I will be coming back to talk about those next steps and a call to action. There are some things that we're going to need to do as a collective community in order to ensure the long-term success of KCPS and our students. It is important that everyone understands that if there is not significant increases in our enrollment, we will likely be back here to discuss future closures. So we have drafted an engagement plan that will serve to build trust with you, our community, and to join, and ask you to join us in our efforts to improve in the areas of academics, enrollment, attendance, safety, and others, and it will provide an open and transparent process for any future closure decisions that may be necessary. In this next phase, we are inviting you into the process from the very beginning, and we will walk together throughout, so that no one is left behind, no one is in the dark, and no one is silenced in this process. But for now, I'm going to turn things over to Dr. Davis. He is going to walk us through our revised academic vision recommendations. I think you're going to need this.
I stand before you this evening to bring the revised academic vision recommendations. Dr. Collier has already outlined some of our revisions that are needed, based on the change in the recommendations that we brought back in October. But before we get to those changes, Dr. Collier mentioned, we have a proposed new mission statement, so we have this here for you to review. Upholding the promise of an equitable educational experience so that Kansas City students thrive socially, emotionally, and academically, this is a part of the proposed plan that we're asking the board to approve over the next couple of weeks. Also, for the public, our plan, Blueprint 2030, really is speaking to four commitments that we're making to Kansas City. Those commitments are around the learning, which is ensuring that students are making progress toward their academic standards, to meet or exceed those standards. The support, looking at the whole child, looking at how we're supporting students socially, emotionally, that is in the plan. We also have goals and strategies tied to the people, that is, the recruitment and sustaining a diverse workforce, and so we do have goals and strategies for that. And then also the system, how are we protecting our resources to sustain a fully accredited school system? For tonight, we're only going to focus on commitment number one, which is learning. I do want to say that the full plan is linked to the Blueprint 2030 website, so those at home, or those in the audience, feel free to peruse this plan with all of the goals, with all the strategies. It is available online. We brought these goals before. We have not shown the strategies, but again, those strategies are listed. So our goals that are included in commitment number one center around ensuring that every student is making suitable progress. We have goals to reduce the number of students that reside currently in below basic on our MAP and ELC performance. MAP and ELC performance. You can see for Goals 1A.1 and 1A.2, those are focused on literacy and reading proficiency. And so we have goals for that. To Dr. Collier's earlier point, as you go throughout these, our entire document, we're stating what we plan to achieve by 2025, and again, how we envision our system will look by 2030. And so this is included in each and every goal. As we look at the focus areas to increase all achievement for those who are below grade level, I do want to say that even though the strategies are not listed, we have ensured in our strategies that all students are benefiting from these goals and from our strategies that we will implement. So, we're ensuring achievement across all subgroups, including training all teachers annually in MTSS and RTI, ensuring that we have personalized plans for every student who is behind on grade level. This will ensure that all students are benefiting from these strategies. Also, in addition to our core areas of math, science, reading, much of that Dr. Collier has already shared, we also have goals around improving attendance, improving graduation rates, increasing students who are exiting our system with market value assets to ensure that they are poised to succeed in college and careers in life. And we also have goals around science, and we've talked a lot about the need for science technicians in our elementary school and introducing labs to students at an earlier stage. So, this is the proposed timeline that we presented back in October. This was based upon the original recommendation for 10 schools. And so, again, this is just the original, so on this next slide, I will show which portions of this original phase we will have changed. So, you will see that these elements on this slide were mentioned in our original plan that was a part of our phased approach. These are the components of the plan that at this time, we're planning for future implementation. You see at the bottom, it's contingent upon our successful geo-bond, external funding, or future school closures and consolidations. You can see on there, grade-level configurations are a part of that. Initially, we stated we wanted to transform our elementary schools to be K through five, our middle schools, six through eight. We're going to pause on that element. Again, these are elements that will come back at a future implementation. Also, Dr. Collier mentioned that beyond the four walls, currently, right now, this is a part of future implementation. We will continue to try to secure outside funding. So, it is our intent to still continue with each of these, just not immediately. The portions of the plan that will be implemented right now, much of which is already underway. As Dr. Collier stated, we started off this year on our five big rocks. Literacy and math was a part of that, so those items could not wait for, for the plan, the Blueprint 2030, so we're, we're rolling with those already. One of the things I do want to point out on this, if we go back to the previous one, it says that we're going to bring back for future implementation, instrumental music for grades K-3. What we're moving forth with is expansion of the instrumental music at grades four through six and continue the expansion at the secondary level that's already started. So, we will begin that expansion on next year. We anticipate that we can have instrumental music in at least 12 of our elementary schools to get the remaining elementary schools year after next. We will continue toward our college and career pathways as well. I don't know if we have. Okay. And at this time, I will bring to the microphone Mr. Jesse Lang, who will take us through our real estate recommendations.
I'm here to share the real estate recommendations that are revised for Blueprint 2030. The high-level summary of this is of the 37 schools that the district currently operates, the administration is recommending continuation of 35 of those, which means that two would be slated for closure conversion at the end of this school year. Those two schools are Longfellow Elementary and Truist Elementary School. No new schools would be designated for creation or establishment as part of this recommendation, as well as Dr. Collier said earlier, no additional closures would be a part of the recommendation at this time. We do know that we need to pursue a general obligation bond to fund some of the needs in our district. We plan to go for that in the spring of 2024, and then there's still more work to be done. So, after that bond, and then after additional community engagement, we need to revisit additional facility recommendations that will need to be made in the future. For the first school that we'll talk about is Longfellow Elementary School. You might recognize some of these factors that we looked at previously for school closure consolidation. What stands out in Longfellow is a couple of things I'll pull your attention to. One is the enrollment. Although the trend is fairly stable, the school has long suffered from a low enrollment, so about 235 students in the building, but also the facility is really something that we need to consider. So, you notice that building score, that was provided by ACI Bolin, which is a local architecture firm that went through all of our buildings, that assigned a building score not only based upon condition, but also things upon, based upon what you want in the ideal school. So, like the size of the classroom, circulation, different things within the space. And so that's based from a zero to 10, 10 being the best, zero being the worst. Longfellow was assigned a score of 3.74. That is the lowest facility score that was assigned to any building in our district. Ideal for their standard is they would like buildings over seven. We hardly have very many buildings over seven in our district. We have a lot of needs, but this building really stood out, especially with the deferred maintenance you see there, over $6.5 million that needs to be done on deferred maintenance. That's just fixing things, replacing things at the building that we know are problems. That dollar amount is also extremely high for an elementary school, especially one of this size. So, the capacity of Longfellow is 325, and it would take $6.5 million just to fix what needs to be fixed at that building and replaced. For the future use of this site, the administration is recommending to start the reuse discussions with that community and then come back before the board, before the end of the school year for a formal recommendation, whether the district should hold on to that site to retain or should, that should enter the repurposing process as a surplus site. Students from Longfellow Elementary School would then work with KCPS to find the best school option for their students. So, as that school closed, they would be transitioned to another school. And Ms. Holiday Scott will go through that plan a little bit in more detail in just a few moments. But the idea would be for KCPS to work with those families to ensure that they find the best landing spot for their student, whether it be a surrounding neighborhood school or possibly a signature school option. The other school recommended for closure at the end of this school year is Truist Elementary. Like Longfellow, the enrollment is low, 250 students, and most importantly, I think what we draw our attention to is that five-year enrollment trend. So, that's something that we've looked at across all of our sites, but this is one of our largest drops over the last five years. We've lost, declined in enrollment, 119 students. Again, a low building score, under seven, what that idea is, ideal score would be, and then as well as deferred maintenance. Additional facility concerns at this site, even if you were to make all of those improvements and invest all that money for deferred maintenance, it has a lot of undersized classrooms, so you would still have spaces that aren't ideal for what we'd like in learning environments for our students. Additionally, at this site, we've had kind of continual academic performance challenges at the school, so it's something that we'd also considered. Future use for this site, we are recommending that KCPS retain this site and reuse it as a possible future swing site for building, relocations, or renovations in other parts of the district, perhaps a professional development center or some other KCPS used to be determined in the future. And just like Longfellow, the district will work with families at Truist to find the best option for their student, whether that be a surrounding neighborhood school or a signature school option within KCPS, of course. So, the question arises, why close any schools right now? This is a different recommendation from what you saw a couple of months ago. We talked about 10 schools, all the way out to 2030. This is just two schools for next school year. So, as Dr. Collier mentioned earlier this evening, this work really started several years ago with that system analysis and has continued into Blueprint 2030. And so during this time, we've really shined a light on significant issues within the Kansas City system, as well as internal issues within KCPS. So, we know that we need to direct resources from operations and buildings and into the classroom. We need to be more efficient and spend those dollars more wisely. But, you know, since these challenges have been identified and they've been discussed with our community, we feel that it's imperative to start to address some of these issues now. We need to take action. We feel that we have a responsibility to start making needed adjustments to the school district. Admittedly, more work will be needed, that's for sure. We'll still have tough decisions to make as a community, but we also want to allow space for the community to continue to be a part of these conversations and be a part of this process moving forward. In addition to the closure, the closure of these schools will allow the district to continue some vital services that are being provided to students. Right now, our, some of our literacy, math, and academic interventionists, as well as social, emotional support staff are funded by ESAR dollars. Of course, that stands for Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. Those are federal funds that have been allocated by the government to, in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. And so helping students we know who need extra support in literacy and in math is a top priority for KCPS. And as Dr. Davis mentioned earlier, you know, that literacy focus, math focus are key elements of the Blueprint 2030 vision. Unfortunately, those ESAR funds are not limitless. There is a clock when they will expire, and we will not have those anymore, but we must keep these key positions and ensure that our students continue to get the support in these areas. So, that's, the resources would be diverted to continue these positions. And finally, closing these schools would also allow the district to increase highly-qualified teaching staff and address staffing shortages. I'm sure everybody's well aware of the staffing concerns that we have, not only in this district, but across the country. We're dealing with a nationwide teacher shortage. Currently, within our district, we have 22 open positions at the elementary level. So, you know, we feel like, we've stated throughout the Blueprint 2030 process, we feel like we have enough teachers, they're just kind of in the wrong spots at certain times. So, other districts have implemented various means to address this staffing shortage. We feel that this is one strategic move that can assist KCPS to ensure that our students have access to a great teacher. Now, I believe we're going to pause for questions that you might have, not only regarding some real estate recommendations, but if you have questions regarding Dr. Davis's presentation on the academic vision or what Dr. Collier started with as well.
Thank you, Mr. Lang. Before we pause, just a quick query of the board, we have two more sections, transition planning and teams, and then a call to action from Dr. Collier. Would you prefer to pause now and ask questions or go through the last two? Keep going. Preference? Do we want to pause? Or go through the final two sections under Blueprint 2030, which is transition planning and teams, and then Dr. Collier's call to action, and then we ask questions?
Um, I actually.
Okay. Yeah, that works. Okay. So, I'm going to start with you then, Ms. Buckner, for questions.
Yeah. Hey, you got to give me time to get my questions together. No, really, I, I appreciate this. Thank you for all of the information. It's very thorough. I'm really just, at this point, with the new recommendation, curious to know about the feedback from both school communities and the plan before the vote coming up, like what that would look like.
Yes, so part of the plan before the vote would be detailed by Ms. Holiday Scott here in just a few minutes. So, we've kind of laid out different steps to be proactive with those families. Obviously, ensuring that communication with them is done beforehand, after, and continually through this process to ensure that they land in a spot that the families are pleased with. So, that's part of that transition planning that we'll talk about with in just a moment. As far as looking at feedback from previous phases, we did look at feedback from all of our school communities. We had targeted meetings at Truist and Longfellow, as well as continued conversations with those building leaders. And so that was things that were entwined in why we came to this recommendation with those two schools. Obviously, like we've stated, anytime we're talking about a closure, it's difficult for staff and families, and so, you know, you're not necessarily getting support for it, but you are getting understanding of the issues that are at hand, and so that's how we arrived at this particular recommendation.
I asked specifically about the type of feedback because of the feedback that I've heard around the concern around Longfellow and their academic achievement. And that's a hard, closure at that school is a really hard conversation, given how well they're doing. And so, could you speak to that a little bit more or what the response has been?
Yes, I completely agree with you. I think this is probably one of the harder decisions to make because over the last five years, Longfellow has been on an upward trajectory in terms of their student achievement. They are actually doing what it is we want to see happening in our schools. And I just had this conversation yesterday with the principal, Dr. Bellard, and I let her know that we commend the work that she and her team over there have done, the, the community, the kind of community that they've built over there. I think our greatest concern right now with Longfellow is the condition of that building and the safety of our students and staff, and that is what, that alone is what has led us to believe that this is the right decision at this time. I did not want to necessarily insert in the conversation a potential reopening because I think that just clutters the conversation, but in some ways, I really wish there was a way for us to pick up that school and put it somewhere else so that we could work on that building or so that they could continue what they're doing. We'll have to continue to explore options, but yes, it is a concern closing that building, but I think especially with the scare that we had early this year with the carbon monoxide leak, I think that right now, that is the right decision to make, and I don't necessarily want to gamble with the safety of the students and staff there. I want to ensure that it is a safe environment as we move forward. We're doing a lot of things this year to ensure that as we close out the school year, but we know the significant work will need to be done in that building before we can continue to have school there.
Um, I don't, I think this might be a question for Dr. Davis, but I wonder about the literacy and math focus. I, please excuse me if you all have already provided me this information. We've received a lot in the holidays, so forgive me. But I was wondering about those endorsements, the data with the teachers who are already endorsed and doing good work. I would love to see their classroom data in comparison to others before we invest so much, or maybe you all have that already and are confident in it. But anytime, one frustration that I hear from teachers is that it's always something new, right? Without proving that, without it proving to be effective, right? So, I just, I'm wondering about that.
Yes, great question, and we have heard directly from teachers who are participating in the training currently in letters and numbers and have received just great reviews, that it is great, based on the science of reading we've heard from the principals of those elementary schools that are also concur that this is excellent training. We do have it on our list to extract. So, we have right now a window open to, for second administration of iReady, and so here in another couple of weeks, we'll be able to extract that data for those participating in letters training to see, you know, what that performance looks like for those in that. But we're confident that we'll see some positive gains, and that will give us the sign and signal that we need to get as many teachers involved in letters training for next year as possible.
You, the window is for letters and numbers?
Yeah, so the plan is for four teachers per building each year to attend training in letters and numbers. We are already working on a plan to get more teachers in this summer. What I was speaking of is that we did a baseline for iReady to start the school year, and so we're now assessing students to see how they've progressed toward their learning targets. That's the window I'm referring to is happening right now. But once that window is closed, we can then pull that data that you suggested.
Can I just add there too? I just, I think it's important to note that this is our, the second year for the first cohort and then the first year for the second cohort. So, these teachers are still in the training, it's not complete. We can pull that data, but I just want to make sure that everyone understands that our, our first group of teachers are still in the midst of this training, and some of them have had less training than others, but we can certainly pull that data to see if we're seeing a difference or a significant, I guess, increase in achievement in those classrooms where they've already started this training. So, we can provide that.
Okay, thank you. And I'm sorry, last question. I would really love to see a strategic plan for culturally responsive teaching, like what are our steps? I know that we've discussed this before, but specifically, I'm asking for a strategic plan. This year, we're going through the book study, base level, baseline foundational understanding across the district, across our community, what's next, and where are we trying to get to.
Oh, we'll get that for you, and I think we'll have maybe even a draft or at least a portion of what it will entail when we come back for the equity update in May, so that then by August, we can have that full document to you before we start the next school year.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Ford?
Thank you for the updated presentation and recommendations. To you, Dr. Collier, I just wanted to say I appreciate how you've navigated these last few months with a very difficult process and how you have incorporated all of the feedback that you've heard that led us to the updated recommendations. And I also appreciate your statement that sometimes you can make the right decision, but at the wrong time and in the wrong way. That really resonates with me with what we are navigating with this. One thing that continues to sit with me when I think about the closure conversation is that closures, I feel, kind of represent like a last ditch effort. Like, we've done everything that we can do and literally, there's no other option for our students, for our community, for our district, except for to close a school. Do you feel, ahead of this conversation, ahead of this vote later this month, that we have done all that we can do that is within our control for TruSt, for Longfellow, utilizing the variables that, that are being used to determine what schools are on the closure list? Have we done everything that we could possibly do?
I certainly feel like we can do more as a school system for our schools. I think in terms of resources that we're able to provide, I feel like we are doing that because we are always looking at how we can provide more resources. But we know our schools need more than what we can give, but it's what we have at this point. But areas where I feel like we can help all of our schools is really around our marketing and recruitment work. I feel like at the district level, there's a lot more that can be done. And a part of that is telling our story. So, when I talk about us going out into the community, I heard a lot of misconceptions. I heard things that were not really accurate. And I don't blame the community for that. And I said this before at a community meeting, a part of that is on us as a school system. We necessarily have not done the greatest job of telling our own story and really highlighting the great things that are happening in our schools. We have a lot of good things that are happening, and I feel like we have an opportunity to capitalize on that if we begin to really market in a way that we should. And so, I agree with you. I think that closure of schools is a last ditch effort. And I think part of the reason why we are coming back with this recommendation is because we want to give some space and time for schools to be able to make the kind of improvements that we're looking for around enrollment, around academics, around increasing attendance before we would even potentially come back with any other recommendations. And the goal or the hope is that we would see such an improvement that we wouldn't need to have as many recommendations as we initially brought forward. We would love to have none, but we know that that's going to require a lot. But I heard from our community that they care about their schools, they don't want to see closures, and I'm willing to believe and trust that this community is going to get on board and help us as a school system make the improvements that we need to make so that we reduce the number of schools that would need to close. So, I'm sorry for the long answer, but...
And then one more, thank you. One more question, just reflecting on the systems analysis that you led with. And I've asked this before, but I wanted to see if there's anything changed or are there plans for any future conversations, systems level conversations, when we talk about what our needs are as a system? Like, it's clear that we have too many schools, period, both us and in other sectors. So, what are those conversations, systems level, looking like moving forward from what you know now?
Well, I think those conversations have to extend beyond us. And so, in terms of the system, we are going to have to start having more conversations. And I feel like Ms. Holiday Scott, she does a good job leading this work with our charter partners. I think we have the foundation already laid for us to begin having those conversations, but we know that it's difficult because there's going to have to be some give and some compromise. And so, I think we are at a place, and I'll let her speak to it more because I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I think that we are at a place now where we can start approaching some of those conversations around how we can be a better system for our kids. We had a really, I think, a pretty great meeting earlier today with Rob and Wabi where we kind of started talking about some of these things. No decisions were made, obviously, but just having conversations about some of these things. So, Ms. Holiday Scott, go ahead.
Absolutely. And we are, we have started having those conversations about the system. As Dr. Collier has said, it is challenging because when she started in her systems analysis review, you understand that there are, currently, there are 20 charter schools and one school district, all in our boundaries. So, each of the charter schools are their own mini district. And so, when you're looking at trying to have the hard conversations, because that means that there is going to be some give and take, someone is going to have to make a decision. And that sometimes is hard when people get ingrained or they believe that the school that they've started is one that should stay. But we are having those hard conversations because as you looked at the numbers, there are increases in high school availabilities, and we actually know that that number is going to go up next year. There is another school extending into high school. So, when you're looking at all the high school options and even extending those, that makes it hard and it's strenuous on our system. But what I have found in having those conversations and starting those conversations, I have spoken with some board members from some of the local charter schools, they are wanting to have the conversation. So, I can tell you that when I came three years ago, that that was not a conversation everyone wanted to have or even approach having the conversation. Now, we have people because they're feeling it themselves. I think initially, the viewpoint was we're growing or the charter sector is growing because they're taking kids from KCPS. And so, I think that was comfortable. But what we're seeing is data that the system itself, as far as population, school age population is not growing. So, it's no longer that they're growing, some of them are struggling with enrollment. And so, it is forcing that conversation to take place. Plus, there's also the conversation about, about school achievement. And so, many of the sponsors are starting to have more of that conversation with their individual charter schools. So, I think we are getting there. We've actually, in our last Collaboration Council meeting, we started having, we continued having some of that conversation, and we will continue as we go forward in the Collaboration Council meetings.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Thank you. First, to Dr. Collier and her team, thank you for all the work. I know it's, it's been a lot, and I can definitely see how you listened to the feedback that was provided. Mine's actually a question, and it builds upon what Ms. Ford just asked and what Dr. Holiday Scott just answered. I wanted to point out that, as you mentioned in the systems analysis, Kansas City Public Schools saw this happening all the way back in 2017. And we looked at each, I was on the board then, and Dr. Bedell and Dr. Collier and many others were on cabinet, and we looked at each other and we said, we've got to figure this out. Like, if we don't figure this out, it's going to just continue to happen. And so, we put forth the systems analysis, we kind of went on a roadshow, if many of, and there were many, many people from this city that participated in coming to see that roadshow. So, the systems analysis really should not be shocking to the business community, to the civic community, to the philanthropic community, to our families, yes. I think it is something we have not done a great job of explaining to you, but that's on us, that is definitely not on you, and we know and will do better going forward. But I just want you to know that we wanted to take responsibility for this, and we ended up hiring Ms. Holiday Scott. And she's been working on this diligently with our charter partners. But there is only so much Kansas City Public Schools can do if people are not coming forward in the spirit of collaboration for our students, all of our students. And this is the part that I think I want to put back to the public a little bit, is that we need your help in bringing everybody to the table in the spirit of collaboration. Because quite frankly, in 2010, before I joined the board, we closed over 30 schools. We did reopen another one, we reopened Lincoln Middle, but do you know that there were many other schools added? If we do not address this as an entire system, this will just keep happening. So, I just want to commend Dr. Collier and her team for this effort. I also want to commend the Kansas City Public Schools for noticing that this was an issue back in 2017 and trying to work on it. And now, I'd like to say that we'd like everybody at the table with us working on it.
Dr. Jones?
I just want to also thank Dr. Collier and your team for working through this. This has not been easy on anyone, especially you guys in it day in and day out. Also, just want to kind of to piggyback on my colleague, Ms. Wolfsey and others, you know, what can we do, whether we're talking about from a district standpoint and as well with assistance from the public, to make it more readily apparent to, to parents when their schools that they might be considering, wherever they are in our system, are not outperforming the Kansas City Public School District? How can we be more explicit? I know when I first started looking for schools for my kids, I went to the state website and, you know, tried to go through all those numbers, which is not easy, even for someone who works with data quite a bit. So, I would love to see KCPS become more explicit and colorful about where they are outperforming. And I would also, you know, to piggyback, you know, encourage our public, our potential families to take a look at those numbers and don't assume that just because something is new and shiny, that they are doing better. The data does not bear that out.
Thank you for that. That is true, and that is something I think we have been trying to grapple with as a school system. I feel like we have really tried to be very polite and not step on toes, and we haven't always told the full story because you're right, in many, in many cases, not all, KCPS is outperforming some of our charter counterparts, and we have, we have not spoken up about it because we didn't want to appear to seem to be going after charters or attacking them. That has never been our position and it still isn't. But I think as a result, many families don't know that, what that data looks like, and they don't know the full story, and they don't realize that we have a lot of great educational options right here in KCPS. And so, so we are thinking about how do we share this information without doing it in an adversarial way, because that's not the goal. But we just want to be very transparent, and we want parents and families to have that really important information as they're making decisions about where their students will attend school.
Yeah, Ms. Ford?
One more question that came to mind, just thinking about the Longfellow since we were talking about the building condition. I know we're utilizing the building score deferred maintenance, totally understand, that makes sense to me. Are there ways or how are we considering helping families understand how a building that meets criteria for foreclosure is then good enough or suitable for our repurposing needs or possibly being utilized by someone else? Like, how are we making sense of that?
Oh, you want to, hey, go ahead, Jesse. This is your area.
So, with, particularly for the Longfellow site, that is something that is concerning, obviously, the score. Because if you, if you hold on to a building with a high deferred maintenance, then you're still going to have to invest dollars eventually. So, I think that's part of the process, is we have these conversations with the community to really figure out what the best plan is for that site. That could include a multitude of things, you know, demolition of the building and holding on to the land for future use. That could be something, that could be a strategy if that's something that the community talks about. So, there's a lot of different options that we might have. Obviously, if it enters the repurposing process and it actually is sold, then we don't have to worry about the deferred maintenance because then that cost would be provided, you know, by the next owner of the property. But that's something that we'll have to come to a resolution on as we continue to have these reuse conversations.
Ms. Cortez? I'm going to save my questions for after the next part.
Okay, Dr. Collier, we'll keep it moving. Thank you, Ms. Relling.
Okay, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry, Jesse.
I was just going to introduce Sharon, so go ahead.
You were right on. I'm sorry.
Next, we'll introduce Ms. Holiday Scott, who will be talking about transition planning and transition teams.
As we know, in continuing this conversation, and it's been said a number of times today already, that we understand and we recognize that a decision or a recommendation to close a school is very hard to do. I have had the experience, unfortunately, in my prior work, and I've had the experience of having to close a school, and it's never enjoyable. However, what we want to be intentional about here at Kansas City Public Schools is to ensure that there is a transition plan and there are transition teams in place with the intent to make sure that it is a positive experience as possible. We don't want to create extra burden or extra hoops for our families. We want to be able to work with them and prioritize individualization in working with our families to make sure that we work with them for them to find a new school location. We also want to keep in mind our staff because it is not an easy process for staff either. And so, we want to be able to make sure there are plans in place to ensure that our staff also land in a, a position that is welcoming for them and where they feel that they can use their skills. So, with this, it's, the main thing that we want to do is to ensure that we are having transition teams. And transition teams, the purpose of them is to ensure that all of our impacted students, families, and staff do feel welcomed and encouraged to remain in the Kansas City Public School family. We want to retain everyone. We want to retain our families, and we want to retain our staff. And so, with our transition teams, there will be a district-wide transition team, and that is inclusive of various areas of the district. We do not want any segment of our population ignored or not included. And so, we will have representation from various departments within our district. So, for example, our early learning, our special education team, our ELL team, our facilities team, our admissions team. So, there's going to be a number, school leadership, a number of departments involved in the district, district-level team. And then, we will have a transition team for each of the schools. And for the schools' input, we want to be able to include staff that are in the building, we want to include parents that are in the building, and we want to be able to also have a district-level connector to those transition teams. And the purpose of those teams is to go through the process of ensuring, one, the activities, to make sure activities and events are in place to ensure that ease of transition, but then to also be able to answer any questions, any concerns, and address those in immediate fashion so that parents are not waiting and wondering what is happening. Because we learned that if information is not shared, people will fill in their own gaps. And so, we don't want to wait for that to happen. We want to be proactive in addressing the needs of our families. So, for our family focus in transition planning, this is just a summary, and I will go through a timeline of how we anticipate things going. But should the board vote and accept the recommendations, we want to focus on, like I said, prioritizing personalized touches with our families and individual parent contact, whether that means phone calls home, communications, having enrollment nights and days at the schools to help the families select a location for next year. We don't want it where families feel like they have to come here to the BOE in order to get their needs met, but we want to be able to go to them. We also want the opportunity to provide school tours for our families because that is something that we did hear during the engagement process, that will there be an opportunity for our families to be able to see potential new, new locations of where their students may be going. And then, we want to always continue through this process. We are anticipating this transition process lasting for about a year. So, there will be ongoing communications with them. We are also establishing a transition website along with our, a specialized email address and a telephone hotline so that there is a specific identified method for parents to be able to contact us about the things specific to transition. So, as I indicated, that we have a proposed timeline that we would like to work through. So, this would, the transition plans would go into effect starting the night of the vote, should the board accept the recommendations. So, there would be communications on that evening sent to our parents and our community about that decision and some next steps so that families know what is happening next. Also, the website... Also, the website, as well as the email address and the hotline, will be implemented and launched that night. So that information will be shared in the communication. Then, following the vote, we intend on meeting with our staff members, um, at the schools as well as families about that decision, and what does that mean for them? Actually walking through with a little more, um, specificity about what does that mean and what are the next steps for their particular circumstance. And then also, within that first week, we want to continue our communications. We also want to launch our transition teams into the schools. Um, as far as the district transition team, we are starting to do pre-planning. So the, the BOE team is already doing some pre-planning, because we don't want to wait. Even if the board decides not to make a decision, it's easier to have a plan and not need it than to need a plan and not have it. So we are already being proactive about that. But it would launch those transition planning teams in our schools. And then we want to look at an implementation of what are called parent navigators. And that is using parents that are already at those schools. So we have, um, our family and community engagement liaison has, have already been interacting with parents at, at our schools. And so they are identifying some parents that would be able to help. We also understand that using parents to help navigate other parents into, um, a new circumstance or a transition circumstance is often easier than sometimes always hearing from a staff member. So going into spring 23, which is rest of this spring, we want to ensure that we are going to have opportunities for school, school tours. We are already planning for enrollment nights, for enrollment nights and days for the families. That enables us to go out to them, for them to enroll on the spot for next school year. We also, um, during that period of time, will talk with the families about what their options are for next year. What are the school options available? But also, we want the families to understand that, um, and we recognize that we have neighborhood schools and we have signature schools. So both options will be available for families, and we will talk through with the families what options are available, what are the expectations, you know, should they pick a signature school, and being able to go through that process. But we want to be able to go to the families and do, uh, enrollment on the spot with them, so that they know that there is a home for their students. Also, this will allow us, um, in the spring, we want to create activities that allow us to have some community-building activities. We also, um, moving into the summer, there will continue, um, activities in the summer. There will be activities throughout the fall. We will also be implementing a student transition check-in during that period of time. So we want our students to get enrolled in the spring, so they are enrolled in their new school. But we will check on them as they have attended and started attending their new school. We will do that check-in in the fall, and then continue our transition team meetings all throughout spring 24. So for the staff, we also have a framework that we want to focus on as staff, and that is also prioritizing an opportunity to have an individualized, uh, uh, contact with our staff as well, providing them opportunities to visit a new, their new school location if they have not been there previously, and then opportunity to collaborate with the schools about specific needs around our students that are transitioning. So for staff members to be able to collaborate together. A proposed timeline for some of our, um, for our staff members, Human Resources have, has already been in contact, um, with our representatives from AFT about what does that planning look like for our staff. And so our staff members will be given an opportunity. Um, it will be by seniority to be able to, um, choose their placement, uh, based on a list of available vacancies for next year. And then there will be a, um, blueprint 2030 placement procedure that will be used for the placement of those staff members. And then there's also a process, should any staff member have any concerns about their new location. Uh, staff members as well will have a fall check-in, so that we, um, see them in the fall after the school has started to make sure that they are transitioning and that we're resolving any kind of concerns that have arisen. So I know that, um, it was brief, but I know it was important for our, our board to have that information. I don't know if we want to pause again or keep going through the end.
Yeah, let's, I mean, unless there's major objections, let's keep moving. We're pretty far off a schedule at this point. Okay.
Okay. At this time, I will, uh, it will be Dr. Collier for our next steps.
All right, so, thank you. Um, so next steps and our call to action. Um, earlier in the, in a previous section of the, um, presentation, the administration, um, expressed that we believe that closure of two schools is our best course of action for our school district at this time. We originally proposed to also close, um, in that first phase, there was a secondary school as well as an elementary school. Um, and as I shared in the opening section of the presentation, our current data actually supports, um, additional closures. However, we do believe that closure of a secondary school at this time is much more complex, and it is a multi-year process in order to do it well and to do it thoughtfully. Uh, the safety and the well-being of our students is one of our highest priorities, and there is a great deal that would need to be addressed and considered, um, as, if we were to move forward with a secondary closure. We believe that transitioning a secondary school well in time for the start of school in August would be a challenging task, and it's imperative that when and if we do this, that we do it well. We acknowledge that this recommendation still won't satisfy everyone. For some people, it's too many; for others, it's not enough. However, this is our good faith effort to responsibly respond to our current reality, and we talked about that earlier. But while also balancing safety issues and also the needs, the voices and the perspectives of our staff, students, families and community. While we make these critical necessary decisions, we believe it's equally as important for us to bring our community along with us in a clear, open and transparent fashion. So here is our Moving Forward Together Education and Engagement Proposal. As I briefly referenced earlier, the next phase of this is going to be vitally important to the success of KCPS and our students. At the October 12th board meeting, I shared that in order for us to be successful, we must do this together. We need you. You've shown up throughout this engagement process, but I can't reiterate enough how important it is that you remain engaged and you continue to come out and to raise your voices and also learn about what is happening in our school system. We need you. We need your continued involvement, um, and we also need your input. We need your advocacy, and we need your warm critique. I noticed I said warm. Critique is necessary at times, but we need it. You have shown us that you care deeply about this school district, and now we need for you to join us as we begin to map out our next iteration of who we will become. During our engagement with the community over the past couple of months, we heard many things, and I talked about this. Some was, some of the things we heard were true, some of them were not. Some things we agreed with and some we did not. But what I do believe is that there are some valuable nuggets of information and perspectives that we were able to gain through that engagement. And that's what allowed us to prepare this revised recommendation. So what is this Moving Forward Together, um, education engagement? Um, it is a sustained, a strategic and intentional engagement with KCPS students, families, staff and community. We are calling you and asking you to please be a part of this engagement. What is the purpose? There are several, uh, bullets, but I just want to talk about a couple. One, we want to minimize the long-term potential harm to KCPS. We don't want it to continue to lose students. We don't want, uh, we noticed that there was distrust in, with the community as we engaged, that was very apparent, and we do not want that to increase. In fact, we want that to decrease. And we know that that's, that will happen only through, um, open and honest and transparent communication and engagement. And then we also, um, want to limit, and it says there increased potential for even greater number of school closures. We want to limit, um, the number of schools that we would need to close in the future. And I think, um, the question that was asked earlier by Ms. Fort was very important around, um, closures being a last-ditch effort. And I totally agree with that. I think that we have a responsibility to do everything that we can before we, uh, move to closure. We also want to, as I said, build trust with our families, our staff and community through this engagement. We want to work towards some solutions, but we want to make sure that we do it in a transparent, authentic and collaborative manner. As I stated, while we were out with the community, there were a lot of good things that were shared, um, some very important things that I, that really weighed on me and I really, and my, my, me and our team. We really took into consideration some of the things that we heard, um, that helped us make this, um, this final recommendation. And I believe that as we move forward, we, there will be a lot of, uh, good information gems that can come from our community to help us, um, improve our school system and to ensure that we're providing the best educational experience for our children. And then, we also want to make sure that we're developing some real solutions for our buildings. We heard over and over again, concerns about the blight in our community, and we are concerned about that, about how we minimize, um, adding to that. And so I think this gives us time also to think around what are some real viable solutions around the use of our buildings. So these, so this is the purpose for this engagement. Um, as we move forward together, though, um, I talked about earlier that if, if, if something doesn't drastically change around in our enrollment, uh, we could find ourselves back here. Not that I'm wanting to come back here, but we could, because if, if our enrollment does increase, and if we continue to decline, then that will be a major concern that we will have to address. But we want to give our schools some time, um, to address some of these, these issues. And so we are, uh, gonna be assigning all of our schools' goals around academic achievement. We already do that, but we're gonna continue, but also goals around attendance, and we do that, and then enrollment. Uh, we wanted to make sure that we provide some realistic goals, and we will be having benchmarks in places where we will monitor that progress, and we will make sure that we are sharing that publicly. We want to make sure that everybody fully understands, um, how we're measuring success for our schools, even outside of academic achievement. And so, um, our research and accountability team has worked on a system, and I want to thank our board for, um, actually bringing this, uh, to our attention around helping us make, um, some decisions that are, that are not, um, subjective and that, um, really rely on data. Um, our research and accountability team, um, reviewed all of the information, all the data that had been taken into consideration, and they created a system for, uh, for, that would allow us to assess our, our schools based on about six categories and 15 key metrics. And this will allow all schools to, um, generate a numeric value that will help us rank, um, uh, schools and that should be considered for closure based on those, um, those metrics. Now, we have to understand there always has to be some space for, um, further evaluation. Um, for example, like geographic location, we can't close all schools in one area. That's just, we can't do that. So that's an example of how we'll have to, after we look at this data, after it's generated, then how can we make some decisions? But it, it will be a very transparent way around seeing if schools are meeting the metrics that have been laid out before them, and everyone will know what those metrics are, and will have time to achieve them. And then we will respond to that. Now, this is in draft form, I want to say that. We have not even shared it with our board. It's in draft form. We are gonna share it in the Friday update, and we, we're gonna want feedback from our board, but we will also share it with our community, so that you know what that looks like and can also provide feedback. But those are the categories and the key metric areas that are there. So what does this look like as we move forward? The engagement model consists of a large task force that will be broken into smaller community, uh, committees. Uh, and those committees are academic student performance. We know that we have an academic vision that has been laid out, but we would like to hear from our community as well and give you an opportunity to weigh in on, uh, what that should look like. Safe schools is another area. We, when we were out in the community, we had lots of questions about school safety. Some of it is misconceptions, because we believe our schools are safe. But we want to, once again, give time to educate our community, but also get feedback and to hear about ways where we can, um, continue to improve in that area. Um, enrollment and marketing is gonna be another key committee where we're gonna need folks really helping and working with us um, in order to, um, attract and retain, um, students here in KCPS. And a part of that is some internal work that we have to do as well, so we're not laying that at the feet of our community only. We know there's work that we have to do, um, to provide a, a product and experience that our families, uh, desire and want as well. So we will continue that work that we've begun, but we also want our communities to be a part of this with us. Educational landscape is important as well, um, because we think everyone needs to understand the impact of additional schools opening, um, additional seats and all of that. And then also, knowing when, there are times where we need the community to help raise your voice around some of these issues. If we know what's going to lead to additional closures, we need to start to speak about some of those things. And we don't want to come into these, this conversation trying to, um, force any particular perspective. Everyone has the right to their perspective, but we want to provide the data and talk about it, and then give you an opportunity to make some conclusion, draw your own conclusions and some decisions for yourself. But there are some conversations that we need to have around this educational landscape if we are really serious about improving experiences and outcomes for kids in Kansas City. We also want a, um, a committee that talks about economic development. This is an area that is really important for our school system, and you're gonna hear a presentation later this evening, if I, when I finally get finished, um, about economic development. But this is an area where I feel like the community could really raise their voices. I do want to say this, KCPS is in no way opposed to economic development. We know that it's necessary for any thriving community. We support that. What we don't support is when projects are over incentivized and millions of dollars are never making it to the school system that are owed to our children. And I'll, I'll say this again, I've said it before. If it's so good, then why is it only here? Why is, why don't we see this happening in, in other school systems, in suburban districts, if it's so good? That's a question we should be asking. We don't want to limit economic development. We want to support it every, every opportunity that we can, but we don't want to continue to see over incentivizing of projects and that money never making it to our school system. That's millions of dollars, and you're gonna see later in the presentation, the amount of money that never makes it to this school system. And then we also finally are gonna have a, a committee around the bond. And really, uh, at, um, going into next year, we're looking at shifting our focus to the bond. That is, we believe that it's necessary. We've not passed a bond since 1967. Fifty-five years is long enough. And bonds are standard in school systems, without question. But we haven't had one in 55 years, and our children deserve more. They deserve better buildings. Our staff diver, deserve better buildings. And so the, the time is now, and we're gonna need folks to be a part of those bond conversations and this work with us to support. Um, the frequency of the meetings will be, uh, the larger task force meeting is every other month, and then those committees will meet monthly. And then we want to make sure that there's not bias around the team composition. We want three co-leads. One is an executive staff member, one a parent or caregiver, and one community member, where everyone has equal voice on those committees. We are intentionally designing it this way, because we, once again, want to build trust, and when we say we need you, we need you. And so those committees will be made up of staff, students, parents, community members, neighborhood associations, alumni, business partners. I didn't include clergy, but everybody and their grandma. We need all of you who are part of this school system, who care about what's happening in KCPS to be a part of this process with us. So here is a proposed timeline, and once again, this is draft form, um, but starting that initial bond community engagement and focus groups in February of 2023. So that's this year, and then enrollment opportunities for our transitioning families. So I want to say that this timeline, just so you won't be confused, it consists of bond conversations. It also consists, uh, consists of our transitioning team process, and then it also consists of the Moving Forward Together Education and Engagement. So you'll see all of those pieces laid out in here. And so if we need to, we can break it apart, so it won't confuse you, but those are three different things that are happening within this Moving Forward Together timeline. Um, I won't go through all of it, because I know we're almost out of time. Um, but the presentation is available online for you to continue to see. Um, but you can see how it's laid out over the next year, and then in April of next year is where we will want to get to that bond vote. Um, and then we're gonna come back to our Moving Forward Together engagement, concluding that in May, um, sharing findings and then beginning conversations around next steps. So here for that call of action, ways that you can support, um, to participate in the bond engagement process with us, what, what that's going to look like, and then also potentially serve on the bond committee. Uh, we also want you to be a part of the Moving Forward Together Task Force committees. I laid out what those committees would be. So if there's an area that you are particularly interested in, we welcome your involvement. Um, we also want, um, a commitment for mentors. We were doing really well with our mentoring, um, prior to COVID-19. We had really built our numbers up. Since we've returned, it's now time for us to rebuild that and get caring adults, um, connected to our students. And so we know the impact. And so we know the impact of that, and so we are asking for folks who are interested to sign up, and the link is there, to be a mentor in our school district. Also, if you're interested in being a reading buddy, being a part of that, there's a link there to help us with our KCPS Loves to Read initiative. And then also, if you're interested in volunteering at your school, there's an opportunity to do that as well. And then finally, we're asking if you're interested to come visit our schools. We want you to come for tours. Don't just assume what's happening there. Don't take other people's word for it. Come and see for yourself the great things that are happening in our schools, and we are preparing a link. It's not, we don't have it ready yet, so it's not there, but we will have that and we will share it. So if anyone's interested in school tours, we can make those available to you as well. We know that some schools are already doing it independently, but we're we're going to organize this from the district level so that then we are able to monitor and help make connections around those school tours. Okay, questions?
Thank you, Dr. Collier. Questions from the board? Actually, I will start, if you're okay with it, with Ms. Cortez.
I did, too. I have lots of questions and none all at the same time, right? You know how that works. Dr. Collier, thank you. I will I will echo my colleagues' thanks for laying out the full vision. I know it takes a lot of time and a lot of words. I appreciate the patience of both the people who are who are present and the people who are joining us online or later. The biggest challenge with a process like this is we can all choose to hear what we want to hear. And I really, I cannot emphasize enough the importance of the sustained engagement. If if we, if it, if what drives engagement is only the threat to the community of closing schools, that is a very unhealthy relationship. And our goal, more than anything else, is to be in a healthy relationship with our community, our parents, our students, our families, our teachers, our staff. But every every piece that you laid out here requires each of us to take on part of the burden. If if we sit back, we, the board, we, the community, and leave the work to the administration, not much will change because it's too much work for any small group of people. This really does take the community. I want to circle back a little bit to the discussion about then how do we, how can we empower our community in the discussion around the landscape? How can we better empower our community to be advocates for a healthy holistic solution or a healthy holistic conversation about the schools, the 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 full system of schools, both Kansas City Public Schools and charters? I believe that it will take everyone all across all of the the spectrums to to really bring all of our counterparts to the table because each of them has different, as as Ms. Holiday Scott laid out, different motivations. And so I would really ask that as we progress in these conversations, that we keep coming back to that piece to give our community more tools, more knowledge, to help drive that conversation. Because I believe that, I I agree, there's more, three years later, right? I've been on the board now three years. Three years later, there is much more openness to talk about it, but how do we get people to to kind of apply both talk and pressure to really start talking about what a healthy system looks like? And I think the other piece, and this is, I guess, more speech than a question. Sorry, Mr. Hogan. But everybody who knows me knows that that's possible. The 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 other piece is, you know, we we know that if we repeat the same actions with no change, the outcomes will remain the same, and we will be back in this space. I know that I have some colleagues who will be leaving the board, but there will be many of us who remain, having to make have these same hard conversations in a few short years if we don't continue to press forward on 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 this vision, on the academic vision, on the community engagement vision. So I think I would encourage everyone to make KCPS part of your conversation every day. Find some way, one way, to relate what's happening in KCPS, the good of KCPS, the challenge of KCPS, the passion of KCPS, because it's when we're out of the conversation that people start to fill things in with what they don't know. So thank you for this. I really appreciate it.
Still no questions. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Any other questions? I have a couple, but I want to make sure fellow board members have an opportunity. No, okay. So I would also, Dr. Collier and team, frankly, echo some of the comments earlier around, well, one, just the sheer amount of work. I mean, I feel, I mean, all of you have put in a ton of work, but I feel most badly for Jesse Lang, just because I feel like he didn't have a life for a really long stretch of time. And so you're appreciative of the entire crew, but I mean, that guy was just kind of plugging through it, and so thank you, thank you all for that. A couple of questions. So Ms. Holiday Scott, on Slide 43, under your transition planning, the first question would be, so we've got a lot of internal and external teams. Oh, you need the, sorry. I'll wait for you to get there. It, actually, I put it on Slide 23. It's not necessarily relevant to Slides 43, rather. A lot of internal teams, external teams, a lot of moving parts, a lot of work that has to happen in parallel to a lot of other work, independent of a lot of other work. Who will have ultimate accountability to make sure all the pieces and parts are fitting together, that barriers inside the district are being removed? Because, and by the way, not just, we've talked a lot about Longfellow tonight, but I don't want anyone to walk away feeling like truce doesn't matter to this team, whether it be the board or administration. It just happened to be coincidentally that Longfellow came up, but we care equally about really all of our schools. But who will have ultimate accountability to ensure that that's successful? And then I guess a part B to that would be, what sort of metrics are we going to measure to ensure we understand whether or not we're being successful with transitioning kids from one school to another?
Absolutely. The ultimate person or people will actually be out of my office area. So the chief of staff and I have two people who are working with me. I have a project manager, and then I also have an administrator who is on special assignment. So we will be monitoring the metrics around it. We will be monitoring, we are also partnering because we know it's a lot of work and a few people can't do everything. We are also in the in the process of communicating with a community organization about assisting us in the process and especially doing some of the legwork in the community collaboration portion of it. So that's the purpose of the team. Everyone's going to take their own areas and their own assignments, and we're going to hold them accountable. So when we look at measures about, is this successful? We're looking at the timeliness of being able to implement the activities. We are looking at the enrollment. We are going to check, and what I call spot checking at different portions of the year because the goal is to make sure we can track 100% of our students where they enroll. We want 100% of those students to re-enroll in another Kansas City Public School. However, even if they don't, we want to know where they are, and we want to make sure that everyone is enrolled before August. We really want the majority of our families enrolled by the end of February. And part of that is, we also are looking at our, our, excuse me, our signature lottery process, and we want our families to have priorities in that process. And so being able to put some measures in place, and and this is one of the things that we have, that I have done previously, is put in benchmarks. What is being done when? What percentage of staff members are being placed? Have they all been placed before the contract period? What does the outcome and the feedback look like? So being able to look at those measures, and we can be able to share more with the board, but there will be measures to ensure whether or not this is successful. Or if something is lagging, how do we put fire up under maybe whether it's a department or whether it's a program to make sure it is getting done?
I appreciate that. I mean, as everyone here knows, enroll, we live and die by enrollment, right? And so if we don't put a laser focus on the students and families of those two schools, you know, it's not going to be good for the district. And so I'm asking June to just capture an action item to bring those very specific metrics back to the board so that we can understand them. And it sounds like you've got some, but some need to be baked out, et cetera. So thank you for that. And so that was my two-part question, which is two questions. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
No other questions from the board, it looks like. So, Dr. Collier, we can go into our workshop presentations.
Okay, so I'm going to ask, I just want to say too, thank you, community, for for engaging throughout this process. It has been challenging, but I think it's been worthwhile, and I think there's a lot of good that has come out of this. And I just want to thank you all just for your extended involvement and engagement. And once again, I can't say it enough, we need you to continue to be engaged with us as we move forward. Shannon, Ms. Jacks, if you will come forward now. She's going to walk us through our policy monitoring on 4.10 repurposing.
Hey, you've got five minutes.
That's right. Five.
I mean, if you can do it, it'd be great, but no, I just, we just always say that to you.
Starting my timer now. And if anyone needs to stretch or leave to go take care of children, I understand. So Dr. Collier mentioned some of the concerns that community members have voiced during Blueprint 2030 about the impact that closed schools have on neighborhoods. And while it's late, it is a good opportunity to kind of share with the community what our process looks like, how we approach it, some of the successes and things that we need to do better going forward, and get involved. Love to have more people in this process. So this slide highlights some of the key things that board policy outlines and that we're trying to achieve in our effort to repurpose our closed schools. As I talk to neighborhoods and interested buyers, we've always tried to stress that schools have served as community assets, even when, not just on the education side, but it's polling stations, cleanup sites. And as such, our effort is always to ensure that the sites continue to benefit the surrounding neighborhood, even if they're no longer serving as school buildings. So the repurposing office was created in 2011 when 30 sites were declared surplus as part of the rightsizing process. It's a huge inventory of closed sites to come on at one point in time. In 2016 and 2022, we again reassessed the closed school inventory and made additional changes to reflect current and future needs. So this highlights the current status of our surplus inventory. Of the 21 sites that have been sold, 13 of them have been redeveloped. Six are in process. Not all of them are in process, but six of them are. We'll review the status of some of these in just a minute, but this, we've also started tracking in the last two years our mothballed sites. And I think this is one area that we definitely should have done better earlier. I'll take some ownership of that. So these are buildings that are being held for future for future use, but community members didn't always know the status of these sites. But the these seven were identified because they either share a site with an open school, and so we didn't want to surplus off a portion of a campus, or because the sites are geographically located that we saw a future need to to potentially reopen them. While almost everyone is familiar with the redevelopment of things like Westport Middle School as a coworking space, we wanted to make sure we highlighted a few of the repurposing successes that are less well-known. So here you've got Seven Oaks Senior Apartments, which opened in 2014, and one thing that's always been dear to me is that you have some former students that are now living in in the school building. And then you have Dunbar, the adult, the former teenage parents center has been converted into an adult daycare center. The redevelopment of Blenheim and Swinney Schools experienced significant delays because we've run into various challenges with tax credits. Either it takes three rounds to secure a LITEC, low-income housing tax credits, or with Swinney, they made them demolish, in addition, from the 90s, before they would even consider making it eligible for historic tax credits. But both of those sites were successfully converted into housing. And then DuBois Learning Center began leasing Milton Moore in 2012 for its tutoring center and then purchased the site in 2016. At the request of the neighborhood, the McCoy School was demolished by the district, and then based off of community engagement, the idea of a neighborhood park was was identified. And so we worked with Parks Department on that transition of the property, and it now serves as a neighborhood park in the Blue Valley area. So for the eight sites that have been sold but have not yet been redeveloped, I mentioned six are in process. Westport High Apartments is already under construction, and each of the others that are listed there, the development teams anticipate breaking ground in 2023. Either they're in permitting or they're they're securing the the last portions of their financing. The other two sites that have been sold but that have not yet gotten underway are actually owned by the city. So we transferred those, one for park space, open space, and the other is a future residential use. So they got started on the former Willard site and have identified a developer, and they just secured their LITEC in this last round. So hopefully, we'll see the former Chick site be the next one that they prioritize. Board members, you do have that handout that has all the individual sites listed, and we're going to start working to get that also posted up on the website, those updates regularly, too. Oh, I think I went too far. So let's talk about holding costs because this is, you know, a reality in in resources that aren't going into open school buildings. So last fiscal year, a little over $600,000. This doesn't account for all the costs because not all of the repairs and security costs are allocated by individual sites, so we know that is actually larger than this. And while that's significant, we're moving in the right direction because this cost has gone down more than 30% since the previous year. One, we focused on reducing utility costs. We sold some sites that helped. And then also, we had fewer big-ticket repairs to some of the mothballed sites. Okay, so a few highlights from last fiscal year. So two sites were sold, Greenwood and Ladd. They were both sold to local, black-owned firms, and in the case of Ladd, the firm is also led by a woman, which we don't always have in our development projects. The owners of each of those development teams attended KCPS schools at some point in time, and they've exhibited a strong commitment to the redevelopment and to the neighborhoods that the schools are within. Both of these sites have benefits agreements between the developer, the school district, and impacted neighborhood associations. For Greenwood, it's, one of the elements of that is the creation of two funds for neighborhood improvements. And for Ladd, not only will the community have priority use over amenities in the building, but the developers working on a community ownership model so that community members can purchase equity shares in the development. So it really does stay under community ownership. Both sites also include a provision that the developers support the district's career and technical programs for the life that they're getting tax abatement if they if they pursue it. And those are both expected to break ground in 2023. In addition, the repurposing effort is recognized by the American Planning Association for our participatory participatory planning process, and and that received the National 20 Planning Excellence Award. Okay, so while we have received commendations over the years, we know we can always do better, and there's room for improvement. So a couple of things to highlight, continuing to explore explore new strategies to increase meaningful community engagement that obviously got challenged during COVID, and we don't see in-person participation fully back yet. And so, you know, we've been trying to to do things more electronically, more personal phone conversations. And then we're working on our fourth benefit agreement currently. This is now something that's an expectation of all of our sales. And so, community members, you can thank this board. It's something that they said, hey, we need to go a little bit further with this. We've been trying over time, but let's make this a little bit more solid. But we need to make sure that as we approach these, they're effective and timely, but also are including the community in a very meaningful way. The last one, we we also know that there's been some misinformation shared about the effectiveness of our repurposing efforts. So we'll also be working over this next year to enhance communications and transparency regarding the status of all the closed school sites, so not just... So not just the surplus sites, but also the mothballed sites. Based on community feedback that one of the board members received over winter break, we've already added all those mothballed sites to the repurposing website. So now a community member can go to that site. Every single one of the sites that has been closed since 2010, or before, at least, was in that original list of 30 and everything that has been closed since, you can access that information there. We do have some barriers that impact the effectiveness and timely redevelopment of our closed school sites. We don't have control over these, but we are trying to navigate ways of approaching it. One thing I want to highlight is that developers who once were really quite interested in our sites, and this is not just sites on the west side, it's sites that are good candidates for historic conversion and/or affordable housing. They have voiced apprehension about our sites over the last couple of years because of the challenges with securing historic tax credits and low-income housing tax credits. These are two really critical funding sources for many of our redevelopments to date. Those developers have actually started doing more work in Kansas, Nebraska, and Colorado. They see those processes as being more streamlined in those states, and they have a lot more certainty. And time and certainty are money as you're looking to redevelop buildings. But over the last six months, we've started conversations with the philanthropic communities to identify alternative strategies so that we can maybe replace at least some of that funding that would have come from a 9% low-income housing tax credit allocation. Can we find other ways of plugging that in? So maybe we can use a 4% allocation, which doesn't give you as much money to contribute into the project, but they, it's a lot less competitive, and you don't probably get it that cycle versus waiting three. So if you can find some money to fill that gap for the project. So those conversations are continuing. We hope that, you know, that will bear fruit over the next year. Because the district has more mothballed sites than it needs to accommodate enrollment trends, as well as significant holding costs we talked about, we updated this year the inventory assessment that we first did last year. This is a list of sites that were evaluated, and then the criteria that were used in identifying, you know, any potential changes. So based off of that assessment, a few key findings. Askew, Masserby, Pershing, those three sites have been marketed for 10 years. Even with a major push this fall, last fall, we still don't have viable proposals to that. They each have some of their own unique challenges. But we also have continued to see vandalism occur. It kind of went up during COVID, and we haven't seen that pushback. And we really need to make sure that we are a community safety of the community, our security team that does a great job of working with us. So we're working to address, strategies to address this. So one, needing to begin the discussions with those affected Askew, Masserby, Pershing communities, like what are alternative disposition strategies or demolition being a possible future option for getting something positive to happen at that site, but maybe not with the existing building. And then we've, we're allocating funding this year for moving forward with demolition with a few sites. So you'll see, oops, sorry. You'll see that here, the sites that we're recommending either demolition preceding this fiscal year, or those, exploring those conversations with the community. And then the one change that's being recommended for movement, and that's moving King Weeks off the surplus list, back onto the mothballed list for construction of a new King Elementary School with a future bond. So I'm sorry if that wasn't fast enough. But I'll take any questions if you have them, or feel free to put them in the packet, and we'll, we'll get to those at a future date.
No, thanks, Ms. Jacks. That was great. Kathleen, you got to follow that. No, 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 we're going to see questions. I'm just saying. Questions from the board? Ms. Wolfsey.
It's not necessarily a question, but I just, I think you really fast went over the fact that you got the, that this district and the process, the repurposing effort, received the APA desert, or award this year. And I just, that is a big thing. I don't think people realize that nationally, people call Kansas City Public Schools to find out how to, what is this process that you've developed, because it is a well-regarded process. And so I just want to give kudos to KCPS and you.
Yeah, Ms. Cortez.
So I'll actually ask you a question this time. There's a lot in the, in the national press right now about school closures around the country with the decline in public school enrollment nationwide. Are there opportunities for you and your team to learn, to communicate with districts that are going through similar circumstances and share experience? I know that there are areas where we, we do things well, and there's areas where we know we have opportunities for growth. And how does that, how does that happen?
Yes. So Jesse and I are actually both members of a dorky group of school planners, and this is one of the hot topics. We get asked to present on this a lot. When we did the inventory assessment last year, we did some benchmarking work about four or five different districts to learn about what things were working. I'm talking with Jackson Public Schools at the end of the month, sharing some of our feedback. We get calls regularly, because our process is much more transparent than you see across most school districts. Again, always room for improvement, but we've seen more results. I would say probably school districts that maybe have sold more inventory quicker, their community wasn't involved at all. And so I think one of the things that we'd like to do is continue to have those conversations with other districts, but it is, I mean, LA just, they're down 300,000 students. So this, this is, it's something that I've had a bunch of school districts in Texas reach out and be like, okay, we don't have to deal with this yet, but we're going to. How do we both do closure processes and repurposing efforts? So I think we'll see more of those conversations continuing.
I would, oh, go ahead, Ms. Fort.
Can you talk a little bit about what the community engagement looks like for schools that we are considering demolition for, or that maybe we're further along down the line? We've already decided. And how do we help communities prepare for demolition? What does that look like, both sides?
Yes. So for demolition sites that it's either been already decided, we've either already engaged the communities, or it's scheduled prior to a bid being accepted from a demolition contractor. So I think that's your first phase. I mean, we have, over time, had some communities say, hey, we want you to take this building down. That's what happened with McCoy. It happened with a few others. But when it doesn't, we do do that proactively. And then you also see, as part of the pre-demolition process, we've always held a community meeting onsite so that people can talk to the contractor, understand what the schedule is, what's being done to address any, any, you know, the asbestos removal, things like that. And so it, that, those conversations do continue. As far as the sites, the Askew, Masserby, Pershing, where we've talked about starting that conversation with them, we've had conversations more formally with Askew and Masserby, with the neighbor associations, that we raised this as a possibility last year. But we were going through that additional process of trying to market those sites. Yet one more time is we are marketing SCARIT. So that'll be going back out to them again and starting the conversation. And then again, also with Pershing. Pershing, we do have, we have a couple more showings that we're doing, so holding off on that demolition conversation until we see if that's really going to move.
One more piece, I don't know if it's your area, or if it would be like operations, is there something that could be shared with the board that outlines the process or system for like managing all of the upkeep and the maintenance of the properties? Is there something that could be shared with us that outlines that?
Yes.
Okay.
Dan says yes.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Jacks, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Collier.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to ask Kathleen Pointer, she will come forward, and she's going to walk us through Policy 4.11 Tax Incentives. We heard a little bit about that earlier, so.
We did, and I've timed this to 15 minutes. Shannon's always setting the bar very high for me, but hopefully we'll meet that mark. Okay, so Board Policy 4.11. The superintendent shall neither cause nor allow KCPS staff, employees, independent contractors, or other KCPS representatives to promote, support, or sponsor development proposals that place KCPS as a taxing jurisdiction dependent on revenue derived from property taxes in fiscal jeopardy. So 4.11 doesn't have KPIs, so these are kind of the board policy guidance items we look to. We look to see the impact of incentives on sustained economic growth for our community. We look to see that projects would not be undertaken but for the public assistance. And then, of course, we adhere to Equity Policy 0.0, our North Star here at KCPS. Okay, so I'm going to walk you through these numbers. You saw a slide like this last year. Some of these numbers have changed a bit. That first number, 17, KCPS was ranked 17th among 5,600 school districts in the level of abated property tax revenue. That is not per capita, that is in total dollars. This next number has changed, $45 million, that's how much was abated from KCPS and charter schools in 2022. Last year, that number before you was 37 million. Okay, 60%. From 2018 to 2022, so five years, the amount abated from KCPS and charter schools increased 60%. There was a reassessment in that time, several reassessments in that time, which certainly had an impact. But if that was the whole story, you would expect the property tax revenue that we're collecting to increase at the same rate. But while our incentives increased 60%, our local property tax collection only increased 30%. So this next number, 26%, 45 million of abatements is equal to about 26% of the current local property tax revenues that KCPS and charter schools collect. This is significantly higher than best practice. We would say that would be no more than 10%. Okay, some history and context. You know, I point to 2020 a lot when we look about how this conversation changed. As a reminder, that was when a company called BlueScope came forward. They had been getting decades of property tax abatement. They wanted 13 more years. This was a bit of a line in the sand for KCPS. We said that this was an equity issue. We did not believe this would be happening in other school districts. We called for the city council to vote it down. They did. I will note, BlueScope, who said they would be leaving if they did not get that property tax abatement, continued to operate their business in the West Bottoms, fully on the tax rolls. Part of the reason we framed this as an equity issue is, you know, we're looking at what's happening in other school districts. And this number here, this 1,700 per pupil, that's for this year. But, so nearly 1,700 per pupil is being redirected from KCPS and charter schools and into development projects. This is substantially higher than neighboring districts serving wealthier, mostly white students. For Northland School Districts, it's between $500 and $900 per pupil. Also, with, you know, putting so many of our dollars towards development projects, we would hope that these dollars are going to development projects in areas of town that really need it. However, we see that more than 90% of the abated dollars within KCPS boundaries continue to go to projects west of TruSt. As we know, TruSt is kind of that economic dividing line here in Kansas City. So after the BlueScope vote, there were calls for incentive reform. A committee was formed to kind of revamp the Advanced KC Scorecard. That committee met for a very long time, for over a year. Recommendations from that committee did not move forward. Instead, City Hall came forward with two ordinances in August. The first one passed, Ordinance 220700. This is an update to the set-aside ordinance. As a reminder, that says projects seeking incentives must set aside 20% of units at 60% of area median income. So that's about $1,200 for a one-bedroom. KCPS did not support that for several reasons. We knew this was going to lead to higher incentive asks while not creating significant affordable housing. We know $1,200 for a one-bedroom is out of range for many of our starting teachers, and certainly for many of our families. This effort also didn't really target residential development for families. We're going to see this mostly in one and two bedrooms. The second ordinance, Ordinance 220701, is about the incentive process. So when you apply to get an incentive, how that works. This is a move to make it administrative approval. The city has since started calling it streamlined approval. To be completely honest with you, it still remains murky to the school district what the difference is between administrative approval and streamlined approval. But essentially, what it would mean is that projects coming forward for certain types of commercial, residential, and industrial projects, if they meet certain marks, would get an incentive based off of a signature at City Hall. This has been held and continues to be held. So I had presented on this back in the fall when it was first introduced, but here's a reminder, these are the maps for residential, where there would be administrative approval, that's the green map, and then industrial, which is the orange. So a couple of things that KCPS is concerned about. One, KCPS, as we mentioned, has long asked to be treated the same as the other school districts. Notably here, KCPS boundaries are primarily the ones impacted. We also see a raise in levels, so starting at 100% versus like a 75% that we see more often in residential development now. We're also seeing this in automatic or administrative approval process in areas of town that have already benefited for decades from incentives. So that's downtown, that's the plaza, that's midtown. And you know, with this administrative approval process, it's taking away the third-party financial analysis, which we have heavily relied on to get better deals for the entire city, and also intense public review, which has also helped get better deals for the entire city. So this is a reminder of kind of our initial response. We are open to this, a conversation around streamlined approval only east of TruSt. We believe all other projects should undergo a third-party financial analysis, including the ones at Port KC and KC ATA. And I'll talk to you a little bit about those agencies in a couple more slides. We also think this should be reviewed in about five years. You know, things aren't stagnant. We need to come back and make sure this process is working for those neighborhoods. KCPS has long believed that we should have a say, all the school districts should have a say over our potential revenues for projects west of TruSt, seeking abatement in excess of 10 years at 75%. This is not an outrageous, outrageous ask. School districts in Kansas have to sign off on TIF projects, for example. Okay, some successes of this year. I would say the delay of Ordinance 220701 is a success, because in its current form, we think it would be extremely detrimental to KCPS. We saw several projects after, you know, public review, public pushback, move forward without incentives. That's part of the reason we think it is so important that there is sunshine on this process. And I would also like to point out, this is my favorite one, that KCPS supported or did not oppose 50% of the projects seeking tax incentives in 2022. Again, KCPS is not anti-economic development. And that's what this next slide is. This is an email. We got this thanking us for our support on a project. This was a rehab of a truly affordable housing project up in the historic Northeast. We enthusiastically signed on for, I believe it was about 20 years of property tax abatement. Okay, let's talk about the barriers. I know you won't be surprised to hear that there are more than one. Should Ordinance 220701 pass in its current form? We think, you know, as I expressed, we have some serious concerns there. You know, the third-party financial analysis we get now, at least from the EDC agency, shows us projects at different levels, like if a project gets 10 years of abatement, if it gets 15, if it's 20. And that has oftentimes brought projects down from their original ask. So they're coming onto the tax rolls earlier. The project has been complete, and KCPS is benefiting from that development. This year, we also saw several projects that are currently getting abatement, being sold. I've reached out to the PIA, which is an agency where this has happened a lot lately, to ask them about tracking, about clawbacks. Those currently do not exist. And then streetcar expansion, you know, it's great that the streetcar is expanding, and we're going to see more development along Main Street. We do not think, however, that KCPS should be foot- We do not think, however, that KCPS should be footing the majority of that bill. And as we see new development, we also see parking garages continue to be built. The city is already overparked. A city auditor report has shown us that. And yet we continue to build parking with new development and, no pun intended, parking garages are a major cost driver with development. Okay, so these are some headlines about two agencies in town, the Port Authority and the KCATA. So the Port Authority has been operating in the exemption space for, for a while now. It, it has a board entirely appointed by the mayor. They are not under the EDC umbrella, however, so they do not do that third-party financial analysis, they do it in-house. To kind of compare what we get from the EDC versus what we get from the port, the EDC gives me that 40-page of analysis, they break out parking, they tell me what it is at 10 years, at 15 years. The analysis I get from the Port Authority is about 12 pages, and they do it in-house. The next one is KCATA. They are a new player on the, on the incentive scene. They are, we have very serious concerns about them. They continue to have a process that does not include the taxing jurisdictions. Their Development Corporation actually had a meeting today about the update to their process, what it's going to be like when a developer seeks an incentive. There was a lot of talk about community meetings and meetings with the city. I still have not heard how they are going to meaningfully check in with the taxing jurisdictions, go through projects with us. We think both of these agencies lead to incentive shopping. We have seen a lot of projects go to the port in the last several years. And with KCATA, there was a project, for example, that went to the EDC last year. It went through their, their financial analysis. It showed they needed 10 years of abatement. They could get the project done and it could come on the tax rolls fully. That developer must not have liked that answer. They then went to the KCATA where they're asking for 20 to 25 years. As I, I don't have an update on that project because we have not been updated on their projects, but I do know that was their most recent ask. So that is incredibly concerning to us. We're also see them, seeing them propose, move forward with developments that have significant parking, even though they are supposed to be focusing on transit-oriented development. And several of their projects, west of TruSt, do not include any significant affordable housing. Oh, and I'll also note with the KCATA, their board is made up of folks around the region. That means people who live in the state of Kansas would be able to vote and make decisions about the potential revenues for our school district. So opportunities for improvement and action items, we always have ways we can improve. You know, continuing to raise awareness and increase advocacy. We have seen, I think, more awareness and advocacy in this space in the last several years, and I do think it is making a difference. And we hope that can continue and that public review of projects does not go away. As Dr. Collier mentioned, here at KCPS, we're going to be looking at forming a committee around this issue, getting our parents involved. We also want to work on a policy for when properties receiving abatements are sold. I've had some preliminary conversations with folks at the EDC and the port about all of us getting together to have a conversation about that. And then, of course, continued policy and process improvements, including in our negotiations on Ordinance 220701. Any questions? And I've put up here our website, we do have a website, about tax incentives, so.
That was awesome. You might have just set a record, actually. I don't know how you did all of that without dying from lack of oxygen, but I'm impressed. Questions from the board. Good point, yeah. Ms. Cortez.
So I always feel like I should preface any of my comments with, everybody kind of knows that I may sit in a slightly different place with regard to tax incentives because of my prior professional life. I think they're rational when they're rational and they're irrational when they're irrational. But I think that there is, I, I would encourage you to, to think about a simple mathematical illustration of the recapture concept. Because as I talk with friends and folks who work in the development space, they acknowledge that that is a rational, that there is, there, there's a very simple formulaic way to approach that. Not easy policy, but I think it's something that can be illustrated either by Ms. Thompson's team or someone, you know, who can do a good net present value type of analysis to demonstrate the potential, you know, why it makes mathematical sense. And if, because an early sale, if we, if, if, if a developer is treating their development as a commodity, which some significant portion are, particularly in the multifamily space, if they're able to monetize their investment early, then it, it kind of begs the question why the tax abatement extends further. And there is, I mean, there is a very clear public policy relationship there that I think we could put in a very simple one-pager for all the council people, for all, I mean, I think it can make sense on the political side and it can make sense on the professional side as well. I think we just have to, I think it's harder to talk about than it is to actually illustrate on paper. I mean, it's, it's pretty straightforward when you start to look at it. We can all make assumptions, but the reality is whether you're trying to clawback 10% or 25%, there is, there's a very easy way to illustrate that. So I'd really encourage you to, to try to kind of take that concept and translate it because I think once people see it, that conversation begins to, to gain some momentum.
I think that's great. Thank you.
The second area that I would encourage, kind of the incentive thinking to get a little bigger, not that you need more, is in what I'm going to call the replacement cycle. As we start to see new projects under discussion or major new projects that might involve sports stadiums, hypothetically, start to happen in this community. And, and they happen, you know, big, big projects happens with some regularity. I think we need the ability to also illustrate for, for the tax incentive agencies, how, and, and again, I think this is something that, whether it's ULI or, or some of the other resources that we have externally, could help us simply explain we shouldn't be using tax incentives, new tax incentives, to cabbage things where incentives are burning off, right? And that is, again, that's, that is an economic cycle that's easily modeled. The development community does it all the time. And I think it is a tool, in, in, particularly in this discussion about the ordinance and whether it moves forward, any kind of public policy that looks at some kind of signature authority really ought to be encouraged to take into account impact on existing product. Because otherwise, what we're really doing is just moving the tax base again. So I think, I think, again, that's something that can be illustrated and explained very simply to our elected officials, the ones who are ultimately making that policy. But those are two, those are two components of what I think we could add to our kind of rational policy argument.
I appreciate both of those. Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Wolsey.
I'll make mine really quick. This, to me, is a perfect setup, two things, no questions. The $1,700 per student that is being redirected from both us and charter schools. So this is something we can actually work on together. You know, I just want to point out that in the academic vision, we are having to put off some components of plan for future implementation, which I am sure we could actually pay for using at least even 50% of that 1,700 per pupil. So I just make that point so that folks know in 2019, reasonable use of tax incentives or incentive reform is kind of what it got couched as in that city council election, was a key issue and has continued to be since then. And so we're getting ready to have city council elections. We're lucky enough to have some folks that are running for that this evening in our audience. But this is something that our public can ask each and every person running for a city council seat, either their in-district person or all of the at-large people. What is your position on the use of tax incentives? And we need to hold their feet to the fire both in April, in that primary, and in June.
Well, at risk of beating a dead horse. So I was just out of curiosity, Ms. Pointer, and for another time, not an action item, but I'd be curious to know who the other 16, the top 16 out of the 5,600 school districts that are, that are, that are getting a worse deal than we are. The other thing, I guess, and Ms. Wolsey kind of hit on this, you know, I, I feel like we, and maybe we've done this and we just haven't seen any sort of impact from it, but how do we go get the charter schools to engage, right? It drives me crazy that they create an environment where, you know, it's a shiny object sort of thing, like our schools are better than theirs. Yet if we could go sit down and have real conversations and partner on this stuff in a really robust way, it would benefit the entire system. And so I don't, again, it's maybe not a question, but Jesus, like I, why can't we just sit down and say, guys, there's so many missed opportunities where we can go push this thing forward as a system, but we can't seem to get them to move on it. And it just, again, at the end of the day, 29,000 students are losing out on those sort of opportunities, right? Because leaders won't step up and be leaders. I mean, a lot of this stuff is so unconscionable and, you know, I appreciate Ms. Cortez's ideas. I think they're great. I think we should figure out a way to sort of make things, put them in a different perspective so different policymakers can sort of maybe think about them differently. I'm less optimistic that the people at city hall actually care enough to understand them deeply enough to actually make policy changes that are going to have the impact that we're seeking. You know, I happen to be close with a big chunk of the, of the city council and, you know, some of the votes, you just go, I don't, it either doesn't meet the financial analysis need for the incentives that they're asking for, and they still vote for them, right? Or there is no financial analysis and so, you just, I'm just not super optimistic in this space. And I hate to, I'm not naturally a pessimistic guy, but it just, again, 29,000 students, right? And it winter, and most of these students are black and brown. When are we going to sort of step up as a community and say, our kids are losing out because we don't have the courage to make hard decisions on some of these issues? It drives me crazy and, man, April 11th, can't come soon enough as a result. I'm stressed out. Okay, I think, I think that's it from the board on this. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We're, we're coming around home base. Is that how you say it? I'm not a baseball guy. Can you do a review of the action items, June?
I have three action items. One of them is for Dr. Davis. What is the data from the teachers with letters and numbers endorsements compared to those teachers without those endorsements? The second one is on the metrics and measurements of goals for Ms. Holliday Scott. How are we using them and what are we using? And then the third one.
Well, hang, hang on, June. Can you, yeah, let's make sure we specify for transition teams.
Transition teams. Okay, thank you. I did not get that in my notes. I will. And then the other one, something that will show a chart or something that shows the upkeep and the maintenance for the buildings. I think Mr. Weekly, you wrote that down. Is that correct? Thank you so much.
I also, I'm looking for a strategic plan for culturally responsive teaching.
Okay, a strategic plan. I better put that in.
And I think Dr. Davis indicated August. There you are. What is it?
I missed that. We, so, okay, got it.
And that is all. Thank you.
All right. Anything else for the good of the order from the board? Nope, I think we're good. We're adjourned. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.